That needs a roll call.
Okay, any conflict?
No.
Done.
Mr. Bradshaw has no conflict. So, is there any in attendance that needs special assistance for hearing or visual? Any changes in the agenda? Okay.
So. Wari, turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Wadi from Bonner County Planning Department. We are here for the comprehensive plan text amendment to hazardous areas and special areas of sites component of the comprehensive plan. This request was made by the planning commission. This file was duly noticed in the newspapers on December twenty one. It was noticed to the cities on December seventh. These are the state codes which are applicable to this project, which is powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners, planning duties sixty seven sixty five oh eight, sixty seven dash sixty sixty five oh nine procedural requirements, recommendation and adoption amendment and repeal of the plan. This is the list of agencies that were notified of this request on December seventh.
There's a problem.
We did receive a comment from Idaho Department of Fish and Game on November thirty twenty twenty two. We did not, we received no comments from independent highway district inland park, Cootney, Pondre Sewer District, Back River Cemetery, Spirit Lake Fire Protection District, and we did not receive comments from any other agencies that were notified of this request. We did not receive any public comments till January the fourth either. So Bonner County first adopted a comprehensive plan in nineteen seventy eight. Since then, the hazardous areas component was adopted on May thirty one two thousand two. There were no changes made subsequently to the hazardous areas component of the comprehensive plan. Special areas or sites component was adopted on, in on two thousand, in two thousand two as well. Again, there were no changes made to that component, component since two thousand two. We did adopt an implementation component which included the goals, objectives and policies from the nineteen seventy eight comprehensive plan. And they were recorded in two thousand two as well. Idaho Code charges the planning commission with the duty of conducting a comprehensive planning process designed to prepare, implement, review and update a comprehensive plan. Just as a background, Planning Commission started, the Planning and Zoning Commission started updating the comprehensive plan back in two thousand seventeen with the formation of Siberia Committee. Now we are in the fifth or sixth year of updating the comprehensive plan with these updates. The Idaho State Code states, "The plan shall include all land within the jurisdiction of the governing board. The plan shall consider previous and existing conditions, trends, compatibility of land uses, desirable goals and objectives, or desirable future situations for each planning component. The plan with maps, charts and reports shall be based on the following components as they may apply to land use regulations and actions unless the plan specifies reasons why a particular component is unneeded." So in relation to hazardous areas, this is what the state code says. "An analysis of known hazards as may result from susceptibility to few, to surface ruptures from faulting, ground shaking, ground failure, landslides or mudslides, avalanche hazards resulting from development in the known or probable path of snow slides and avalanches and floodplain hazards. For special areas or sites, this is what the state code says, analysis, analysis of areas, sites or structures of historical, archaeological, architectural, ecological, wildlife are seen in significance. The amendments that have been proposed by the planning commission meets these basic goals of the Idaho State Code. And Planning Commission recommended approval of these, of these updates with a vote of sixes to zero. Their hearing was held on December sixth twenty twenty two. I can go over, I can scroll over to the updates that were recommended by the planning commission. So we are looking at hazardous areas first. It contains all these sections, ground failure, slope hazards, avalanche zones, liquefaction, wildfires, floodplains. And there's a, there's some detail on each of these, along with some maps that have been put together. And the other section that we have here is special areas or sites. This section basically consists of a list of archaeological monuments or structures that were, that have archaeological significance, archaeological sites, preservation of cultural resources, historical significance, architectural significance as stated by the, in the state code. And that basically concludes my presentation. I can take any questions.
You said fishing game gave a comment? On mine it said none. What was the comment?
Yes, so that staff report was probably prepared before we got the comment from fishing game. I'm sure it's included in your folder, the fishing game comment. I can bring it up here as well.
Where would the, I read the letter for fishing game. I'm interested in it in regards to wetlands. Since it was not included, what is, is there a recommendation for an area? Put it in the comprehensive plan?
That would probably be the hazardous areas if that is where the board wants to include those comments or, or the, or the comments about wetlands? Oh, they didn't.
Yeah, because there's somewhere else in there.
Sure. So Jake about planning director. So I remember during this, the discussion and drafting up this component that the planning commission decided that hazardous areas wasn't the most appropriate place for, but it's a better spot to analyze it and include it in natural resources. So I believe that's where they're going to include the comments or analysis on, on wetlands.
So just so I understand. Wetlands is going to be included. Conversation will take place with planning commission, but it will be in a different chapter.
Correct.
What was the reason that they chose natural resources for the hazardous areas?
Thinking back to like October, November when they discussed this. So I believe it was that wetlands themselves aren't inherently like a risk, like a natural hazard in itself. It's not like it's a cliffside, but it's more of a it's a natural area, right, to preserve or protect. And that's more of a natural resource rather than a, a risk. A hazard. Sure. Yeah.
But it's also. What was the, did the commission speak about this not being addressed under hazard? Because there is
This came in, this came in between the time we did our staff report and now, so.
Or, I'm sorry, farther down on the letter.
I don't believe this was, was sent on November thirtieth. Okay. I don't, I don't recall exactly the discussion around this off the top of my head. Or if they Yeah. You remember this being discussed by the planning commission? Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody want to speak in support of? Anybody neutral? You'll be neutral?
Opposition. I think someone is there.
Okay, ask for opposition.
Good afternoon Chairman Bradshaw, Commissioners Williams and Omat. My name is Jennifer Exstrom. I work with Idaho Conservation League and I'm honored to be working to protect the amazing waterways and lakes that define our region. I want to thank you for your service to Bonner County and welcome you to, to the board. Glad to be entering hopefully into a new era where stakeholder and public comments are considered and given due respect and consideration. So before commenting on the specific components of the plan before you, I want to reiterate our previous request that you temporarily table the entire planning process and start from the beginning. This process has been rushed, has disregarded meaningful stakeholder and public input and has not considered current conditions and data as required under Idaho Code sixty seven dash sixty five oh eight. And it puts the cart before the horse by updating the goals, objectives and policies before the comprehensive plan components as, as you're considering today. And I think it would be ideal if a professional planning consultant were retained to facilitate the process of updating the entire plan. But for now, specifically regarding the components before you, I will say that chapter four of the special areas component ecological significance is woefully inadequate. A total of three sentences describe the ecological significance of Lake Ponderay, which is embarrassing at best to have in our county's guiding document. It mentions Kokoni as the only ecologically significant aspect of this amazing waterway. There is not even a description of the resource, no mention of wetlands, threatened species like bull trout and the many other ecological functions it serves or the pressures that it faces. And the letter that was previously mentioned from Idaho Fish and Game dated on November thirtieth prior to the staff report being submitted is a very important comment letter. This letter mentions the importance of wetlands and the fact that they are completely overlooked in chapters four and five. By the way, it was suggested that this, that wetlands were put into the special areas, not the hazardous areas, but special areas for the county. I will add to the fishing game comments that we have several designated class one peat bog and fin wetlands in Bonner County which are rare, which are unique to our region, are home to numerous rare plant species and are very sensitive to changes in water chemistry or hydrology from onsite or offsite activities. And they're irreplaceable, meaning they cannot be mitigated or restored if damaged. And this is all documented in Idaho Fish and Game historic documents that I can certainly provide to you. Regarding the hazardous areas component, the previous version acknowledges that the Federal Emergency Management Act's flood study says, "The floodway is to be kept free of encroachments in order that a one hundred year flood may be carried by the channel without substantial increases in flood height. Encroachments such as fill structures, et cetera, reduce the carrying capacity of the channel." That language has been removed from the document before you today and it is a disservice to landowners, developers and the residents of Bonner County to exclude this type of really important information from the comprehensive plan. So I urge you again to start anew with the entire process. I would welcome an opportunity to work with you and other stakeholders and community members and a planning consultant to devise a plan that will serve our future well and guide us toward continued growth in a way that does not undermine our irreplaceable resources, our economic vitality and the quality of life in Bonner County. Thank you.
I'm just Jennifer Wood and I'm going to give my minutes over to Molly.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify on the comments you today. First one, the comment.
To the microphone. So the recorder picks you up. State your name for the record.
Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission. Could you clarify what the commenting process is today? Are we going to have public comment on each chapter? Because I have full comments on both chapters and just general comments on the comp plan process.
The two items they have listed there.
Okay, so I'll just divide my comments up by. I am didn't plan for three minutes. So I'm glad Jennifer's giving me my, my time. Um, her time. So Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission again. And I honestly haven't been able to follow the comprehensive plan and process well, primarily because there's been multiple important land use hearings taking place in parallel with this process. And also I'm finding that the process has not been all that compelling to participate in. When looking at the fact that this was sent out to over a hundred agencies, departments and municipalities and only one agency replied, it seems clear that this process isn't working very well. Not one fire department or fire agency commented on the wildlife section. And the Lakes Commission would have weighed in on specific comments or specific chapters related to lakes and tributaries. But we weren't on the list and we weren't contacted for that information. So I've only had time to look at these chapters, just briefly skimmed them just last week. And, and because of that, my first recommendation would be to table the comp plan process and take the time to create a process where all stakeholders and professionals are included and engaged in a way that is compelling. And we end up with a comprehensive plan that is truly comprehensive. Maybe that can be accomplished with more time, utilizing a professional planning consultant, individual meetings with experts in their field and community members. But in case you don't plan on pivoting and doing that, I do have comments on these particular chapters. So I'll try to address hazardous, the hazardous chapter. In, in the hazardous chapter, I recommend adding shorelines because shorelines are at risk of eroding and sloughing due to powerful waves, flows and soil saturation. And they aren't mentioned anywhere. Since the goal for the hazardous area chapter is to protect the community from public and private financial loss and of life and property, protecting shorelines should be emphasized. Also, since our waterways are considered special areas in need of protection, this would reinforce that goal as well. They do mention ground failure, but there's no mention of shorelines and the real potential for loss of property, both land and structure from eroding shorelines and ground failure. The chapter does also talk about liquefaction, but doesn't mention that soil on the shorelines are highly susceptible to soil saturation, which is that liquefaction. And landslides are mentioned, but they're very different than a shoreline sloughing. So they should be called out specifically. Floodplains are also addressed, but they only mention flooding and flood insurance. They don't address non-flood events that occur in a floodplain like shorelines. Because shoreline eroding is a, it is a different process that can happen in floodplains that's, that's not mentioned at all. Like houses falling into lakes because the land has sloughed off. Also, I believe the floodplain permit. With the floodplain permit, there is an allowance, many allowances for development, including filling your property with soil above that floodplain level. And if that fill takes place on a shoreline that is susceptible to powerful storms and soil saturation, allowing that increases risk. It isn't protective and it doesn't serve the goal. Also, the floodplain chapter is very scaled back. They used, there used to be information on why our county is susceptible to flooding, snowpacks, spring runoff, information on our dams, and that's been totally removed. I reckon, I do recommend adding wetlands as a hazardous area. Developing in wetlands not only damages a sensitive ecological area, but it increases risk of public and private financial losses due to flooding and common water related hardships. Restricting development in wetlands would reduce the risk of conflicts with neighbors who are diverting water, which happens regularly. And they just send their water off to the next neighbor. Septic saturation failure, very common in wetlands. Flooding and drinking water contamination, all hazards. I would also mention that while, but the wildfire section is also heavily scaled back from the original. And I'm not knowledgeable about wildfires or fire protection, but I would think that fire managers would want to know that significant changes were made to that chapter and that they have important information to provide. Thank you.
Susan, you hear us?
Barely. This is Susan Drumheller and I live in Sagel, Idaho. And I, I also was a little bit confused about the process here. I prepared my comments expecting to have only one opportunity to comment. I'm just going to go ahead with this. And I also was concerned about the, the fact that the fish and game letter was not mentioned in the staff report, even though they got the letter well before this staff report was put out. I also feel like the contents of the letter should have been brought up during the, the staff presentation. And again, I just want to reiterate that they had suggested that wetlands be included as areas of ecological significance. And this isn't the first time that fish and game comments have not been included in staff reports or hearings, at least the, the content of it. One thing I would love to see change with the new commission is that we have a better sense of what the public comment is in the staff report when they do have public comments. And Idaho Fish and Game was invited to a planning commission meeting last summer during which time the fish and game staff member was treated really rudely by commissioner who told him that if Idaho Fish and Game would comment on projects and proposals, it would make a difference. But it seems that that is not the case. I'd like to draw your attention to the last paragraph of the letter, which begins, "Within the notes of the commission discussion, it is mentioned that the county does not manage natural resources and that it is not responsible for approving wells. While this is technically true, it is this type of justification that has exacerbated the unprecedented growth in Bonner County, often to the detriment of fish and wildlife." And I've heard this justification, speaking for myself now, not quoting. I've heard this justification over and over from the previous commission to justify controversial developments that could negatively impact our water quality, wildlife and quality of life in general. And I, I hope that this commission will take a little bit more responsibility for how land use decisions can impact our natural resources. I also want to point out and reiterate that this process is backwards. The public and agency input on the chapters should be influencing the adoption of goals and policies, but those goals and policies have already been adopted. As far as hazardous areas, there's no new data despite ample public comment from last summer, summer that urged the county to filter its goals and objectives through updated data and modeling regarding current and future climate conditions, which we know are dramatically changing. Had we done this, perhaps the county would not have taken out the prohibition of development and floodways in the updated objectives under hazardous areas. And the decision to do that didn't seem to have any basis other than one commissioner's personal opinion. There was no data to back up that decision to allow development and floodways. So I'd also like to point out that the fishing game letter notes that the information in the updated special areas chapter is not up to date with current facts. So I'm not sure exactly how you fix this situation, but I would also suggest that you pause, table this and consider hiring a consultant to help you make sure this comp plan actually reflects current conditions and the values of the residents of this county and not just special interests. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah. Yep.
Hi Wayne, this is Commissioner Omat. Are you there? Please unmute yourself or your computer rather.
Now trying to get it to do that. My name is Wayne Martin. I want to thank all of you for your time. I have concerns. The subcommittees submitted their recommendations quite, quite a while ago. It was delayed and being looked at and then being compiled. It seemed like it was being rushed in being compiled. I believe that it would be in the best interest of Bonner County for a group of citizens that were involved or could be involved in assisting and compiling all the recommendations from the different subcommittees. I attended many of those when their reports were being given to planning and zoning commissioners. My wife was on the subcommittee for the Old Town Priest River Group. Unfortunately, COVID occurred during part of that time, which created hardships and restrictions for people being able to get together and being able to express things. I was not impressed with the exact way that it all went because it seemed to be hodgepodge in trying to get things together. I was not at every group meeting, so I don't know if it was the same with that. I would had, I do agree with what the people before me have expressed and stated. I do know because I've talked to certain other fire departments and other people that the emails come out and they've got a list of emails that they have to go through and then they have to try to decide what is the most important. And there's one email that is sent out and there's no follow up, not a, not even an automatic response back saying, hey, we haven't heard anything from you. You know, after ten days or twenty days and all. I do want to also express that I have a concern with what is has happened with the previous commissions and looking at Athol and with the development over by Super One, they require the developer to show what they intended to do on the property. I know we're not exactly on this. But unfortunately, the previous commissioners have not required the people to do that. And when they approve what the people want to do, it goes with the property and not the person that's wanting to develop it. That's not a good way to do it. My opinion. But I do thank you for your time. I hope you folks will listen to what is being said. And I strongly suggest, recommend, ask that you folks postpone this for a little bit. It's, we've been without it for a while. We can wait a little bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Lynn Scott.
Mount Lynn Scott Sagel for the record. If we're going to be considering the comments and implementing Idaho Fish and Game has submitted, we're going to have to reschedule this hearing because it will be a substantial change to the, to the proposal. So I don't know, I, if, if you're in that direction, I will hold my comments until that point in time at the rehearing. So it's kind of up to you guys, I guess.
I'd really like to hear your comments personally.
Okay. Well, you know, I read through the, through the Idaho Fish and Game comments and, and through the years, we, we have received different comments from them and I've never seen staff, you know, not supply them to us, whether it was the planning commissioners, on commission, we always had it in our, in our link, in our drive. We were always able to go ahead and look it up. You know, kind of going back just a little bit, you know, those subcommittee meetings, as you're very much aware of, went on for about four years. And it's been going on almost two more now that we're trying to compile it. So I don't understand why people say we're rushing it because I remember hearing complaints that we're, we're going fast enough back then. And so it's like, we're not going to be able to appease everybody all the time. As far as these comments go, that, that fishing and game have, you know, it's quite interesting because as mentioned, that, that sank to last paragraph. Fishing game makes some comment, while the county does not approve wells, there are no wells needed without a home to provide water to. And I thought that was a very interesting comment from Idaho Fish and Game. And I thought that was a very interesting comment from Idaho Fish and Game. So I got to him, I contacted Scott Potter yesterday. He's with Idaho Department of Water Resources, the Corley branch. He took over for. Alan Beardsley down there. And I asked him, I read him this and asked him, what purview does Idaho Fish and Game have on wells? In the state? He said absolutely none. That's Idaho Department of Water Resources. Then I got a hint and I read further in here and they would like to go ahead and implement. Their Idaho Wetland Conservation Prioritization Plan and gives a list here of some of the, some of what they consider wetlands. The, the problem with that is, is the. Regulatory authority that belongs to US Army Corps and US Fish and Wildlife, not Idaho Fish and Game. So I got a hint, I sent my emails down to Megan Bilgen, US Army Corps, Walla Walla Corlane Regional Field Office Manager. I asked her. What, what role does Idaho Fish and Game have on US, on the US Fish and Wildlife Service mapping? And, and she said that the state, understate Idaho agencies does not have a program to regulate dredge and fill on wetlands. Only the US Army Corps does. And so then I got a hint, I dug a little deeper and I got a hint, pull up their maps. And just for an example. On one of the maps, it's the only map that I could find on their website that pertained to Bonner County was down here at Kelsol Lake. And so they gone ahead and supplied this map. I guess I will submit to the record so I can show it to you. Idaho Fish and Game is showing. If we try to go ahead and adopt and implement a map in our comprehensive plan when we're utilizing. US Fish and Wildlife Map, US Army Corps, it's going to come, it's going to create some arbitrary maps for sure. I was hoping that Jason Johnson was going to be here. He, he does everything with the Barn County staff for. You know, waterways and, and wetlands and things like that. And maybe he could shed some light on this. So if you are considering that. My suggestion is maybe we make sure that Jason Johnson's here and, and looks into this a little bit more because as I see it, it's going to create some conflict. On adopting two separate maps. You have any questions for me?
And I do have some questions for you. Did you reach out to Idaho Fish and Game? Because you mentioned other agencies outside.
I tried to email them and there's some interesting.
I want to finish the reason why I say it's important because this is a cop plan for our area. And one of the things that we're hearing from the community is the input. And I will, I've heard a lot of agencies not respond, but Fish and Game does take the time to give us a response. And in my opinion, we owe it to them to say, how did you come to this decision and why? And how did, and how does this impact in asking them what that difference is if they took the time to say this was important? For the cop plan of Bonner County, not just looking to Cootenay County of what they're doing. Because at the end of the day, they are our resource. They are the resource for this community. So would it be reasonable if we haven't been able to make that contact and they have given this information? To hold off on this decision so that we can understand the breadth of that letter?
Yes, and that's why I started with, you know, if you're leaning towards considering this, we have to have another hearing anyway.
Because what we have is a, we, I, I feel as commissioner that we have a laundry list of people. And we're sending out a robo call for input without a little bit more work that says. I want to be able to know that these particular, like Lakes Commission is here. Are we reaching out to the area to ensure that our decision is a representation of the people? Because it's not for me to say, do I like it? Unfortunately, it's not my opinion. It's what are the rules, where are the ordinances? And what is the representation of the people? We have a lot of people that are concerned about our natural resources, especially water. And that's a big topic in our comp plan. And I think it requires us to make sure that we did everything we can. Which I think you're right to recommend tabling it if we're going to consider it because they took the time to address concerns that. Could reasonably be put in that chapter.
Sure. And it was quite, it was pointed out to me also on this letter. It was digitally signed by Carson Watkins. However, he's not the person who drafted it. So I didn't know exactly who to reach out to. I was just looking into this yesterday. I have not had a chance to figure out who I emailed down there. Because Carson's, he's pretty new. He gone ahead and took Chip Corsi's spot two, three months ago, I guess it's been. So he hasn't been in that position for very long. So I don't know if he's the person we need to talk to or whoever drafted this perhaps.
I think we've had, we have a long history with this comp plan in Bonner County and I don't want to discount the work that community members put together to sit on these boards. Because every, you're right, we're not going to please everybody, but I, but there's more work that we can do to come together as a community for our community. And I, I think that it's reasonable to get more information on that particular. Issue and the impact to our county and to reach out to resources within our own community that have an issue or concern.
At which commissioner you want? There's been, in fairness to the commission, there's a six vote. There's been a lot of opportunities, but I also share concerns. With this letter and that the Lakes.
I mean, there's more than just the Lakes Commission in our community that. Well, conservation also.
And I was at that meeting when, when, when this letter was discussed at the planning, zoning, attending planning meetings anyway. And it was discussed about putting this in natural resource section because if you look at natural resource section, that's where the wetlands is located now. And so that's kind of the thought process on that. Well, you know, it will be addressed, but perhaps it does belong in natural resource section.
Yeah, this, this comp plan. Rebuild. Was going on when I got elected four years ago. It had been going on for a couple of years. So far as being rushed into. I give that no weight whatsoever. Why was the comp plan being rebuilt? That's what you got to look at. The reason it's getting rebuilt is because there was language problems and a lot of it. It left loopholes, backdoors. For developers, other things like that. It just wasn't worded right. There was a redundancy. Where something was repeated in several different places, but wasn't necessary. And so. Give a hundred percent validity to what Fish and Game said. But the wetlands is already in a section for wetlands. So why do we need to put it in another section? Why you need the redundancy? Because it, it tells you right there, analysis of areas, sites or structures, historical, archaeological, architectural. Ecological, wildlife, scenic significance, hazardous areas. Pause for an analysis on each one of those things. And if you go over into natural resources, you'll find wetlands and stuff. And most of the wetlands either falls under Corps of Engineers or FEMA. And we're not going to adopt or pass anything that contradicts with either one of their guidelines. We get Susan up already.
Well, that's not what Fish and Game is saying. And I, I thought, plant, planning, get, correct me if I'm wrong, the letter comes. And it's not included in your write-up. Is that, it, because on mine, it says that there was done. So. Did you include what their issues and concerns were when you looked at that?
Commissioner, I have to say that. Typeles do happen in staff reports, they are not intentional. And that is why it was corrected in the presentation today. We make sure that whatever packets you get for the, for the hearings, they do include those letters, even if we couldn't include them in the staff report or whatever. I'm sure this letter was not received before the planning commission made this recommendation. If they had, they would have probably included those comments in their recommendation.
So is there any harm in saying, let's review this letter, the issues and concerns, the mapping? And the concerns presented by members of the community? Because if we're going to say we haven't been moving too fast, it's been over four years. What does a couple more weeks do to make sure that we address the concerns of the people that we are here to represent?
If I may.
No, we can abuse him all evening.
Well, I may support that or not, but I was just going to say thank you. And, and then I, because I'm not sure if we're into deliberation.
Okay. We'll close the public comment and then we reserve the right to question. Oh, we got one more this.
Mark Lynn Scott for record. If you're thinking about postponing this and, because as written, you have to accept it or reject it if there's. Concern with changes, there are some changes in there and we were talking about earlier today in regards to. There's a lot of natural sites in there. It's showing a lot of things on Forest Service ground and it was, it was discussed during the planning commission. Do we really need to address those? Because, because they're out of purview of the county. For example, I think in your, you're showing three photos of. Lookout towers. At least one of them hasn't been there for 20 years. So I mean, I, if you're going to do it, maybe. Update that portion and maybe consider. It was discussed, like I said, at the planning level. Take the portions out that the county has no purview over, such as US Forest Service. Thanks.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your respect and consideration to other agencies having jurisdiction over certain decisions. But I just want to say, just because such as the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over dredge and fill permits and wetlands. It does not preclude the county for adding protections as you see fit. Thank you.
We don't have that many people. It's just.
Not that big a crowd today.
I apologize. I'm not really sure what to say at this point, but I, I just feel like I very much misunderstood what the process was going to be today. For public comment. I didn't know if you would deliberate or you would discuss, you know, have conversation. You'd started into the hazardous section and then you just asked for public comment. So I was very confused. I didn't know ahead of time that there would be a three minute for this particular process today. So I just need to state that for the record. And with the part, one part that I missed was that I also feel like wetlands should be added to the special. Sites and areas. And I do not see any problem with adding wetland protection to any section in the chapter that it applies to. There's no harm in doing that. I also suggest that once the comp plan is done. That you go to each of those chapters and you determine where that might apply to code. And so that you apply every aspect of this comp plan to where it actually needs to be in policy. Because it very easily is missed. Which leads me back to what I was, wanted to talk about at the beginning. Which was that it seems like there should be definitions for each of these chapters at the beginning of each chapter. They were outlined just now in Idaho Code as a hazardous areas and special areas, but they're nowhere in the chapter. They're nowhere in the code. What a, what hazardous areas are, what special areas are defined as. And then maybe that goals, objectives of policies are summarized at the very beginning of each chapter so that you don't have to. Physically go back to this implementation section that we don't even, most people don't even know exists. Or didn't at the beginning of that process. And that informs what's going to be next within the chapter. And I think it helps. Make decisions better. So I found no definition for hazardous areas or special sites in the code. And the closest definition I found was to flood hazard areas. I also found information in the environmental section of chapter seven to protect, which is defined as. The same as hazardous areas and the goals and objectives. To protect its community from the loss and lives of property and to reduce public and private financial losses due to flood, fire. Mass wasting avalanches and excessive slopes by setting standards for development within hazardous areas. And discouraging development in high hazard areas. And I also want to mention that in hazardous areas, they also discuss flood plains, which are FEMA maps. They are very much related to wetlands. There's, that should not be. If you're going to leave out wetlands from the hazardous areas, then you need to leave out flood plains because they, it's wet areas that are hazardous. So I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we will close this all public comment and we'll. Start talking about it. I think, I think since wetlands are covered in another area. Of our comp plan, correct? Okay. You could add wetlands, see chapter, whatever. Blood planes, see chapter, whatever. And then they're covered. So that would be an amendment to what we've got right now. To put the whole thing in there if it's already over here. Just say where it's at. Go see after so and so paragraph, so and so.
Isn't there a definition of each of these particular sections? Therefore, the protection of wetland is going to be differently defined in hazardous versus special interest. Because of the definition of the title. And I believe what I'm understanding that wants to be captured is to ensure. The specific protection of this area is evidenced in the individual chapters is what your, your last statement was. And that's not the same as see chapter because hazardous, you're going to talk about how the, the aspects of fishing game potentially say. And then for special interest there, because I know there's been issues where people say we've ravelled over wetlands. There, there's a different topic that you might have in special interest. So I, the duplication only matters if it's exactly the same thing everywhere versus it's a little bit different because it's not the same. It's just the same topic with a different issue. And I think that's where people in the community look to a consultant for the comp plan bill to ensure that we're capturing. The issues and concerns regarding the issue that we're putting under these subheadings.
You would think any issue that has to do with a particular subject could be listed under that subject. Instead of going to that subject and finding everything except. Hazard part. Now I've got to go over hazard and find out that it actually addresses it over here.
Then you would just flip it upside down and see, I'm going to talk about wetlands, rivers and just mark, is it hazardous, special interest? You would flip the way you do a comp plan. But this way, you are learning what are the hazards of your county and you're going through those. And that would be one of them. And then special interests of your county and you're going through all of those. And so having wetlands appear in both sections, it's not the exact same issue when you're looking at a special interest versus a hazard.
Regardless, the hazardous area definition found, found on page four of the staff report is very specific. It has probable path of snow slides and avalanches and flood plain hazard. And that certainly deals. With water. I am. I am troubled by the Lakes Commission not having the opportunity to weigh in. I will also say. Six and oh vote unanimous from the commission, which I appreciate the labor and I've attended some of. Those meetings should be acknowledged. So I'm, I'm not even certain where we're out with this, but I'm not prepared at this point. To recommend that we go forward. And I like the idea of tabling it, but I'm not exactly sure what our options are. But that's where, that's where I am at at this time.
I, I think it's important to state that tabling isn't being negative towards a six and oh decision. It's. There are additional concerns that brought forth that warrant a review of a decision to ensure that. You're meeting the expectations to represent the community, to build what we are here to build for the community. I don't think that's a slap in the face to the commission. And because I, I wouldn't make a decision saying it's six and oh, therefore we just move forward. That's why it comes here for us to evaluate. And I do think it's, I am on the side of table this. Let's address the issues that were brought forth. And I think there are additional suggestions of if we're going to table it, there's some other changes that we could make to this section that would be beneficial. So I don't. Be a reason why not to date, to deny this and then it can come back later.
So from here, right, you have a recommendation from your planning commission. That's their job per Idaho statute, right? So now you guys can make an action, right? So prior to this, you can't make an action and modify your comprehensive plan without a recommendation from that, that. That group, right? So from here. Last time when we did this with the previous commission or previous board where they wanted to make changes to the file, right? Changes to the text. We held a workshop. Or no, we continued the file. There's a couple of different ways you can do it. One, you can continue this, this hearing. To a date and time certain in the near future, work through your changes, come up with your draft. And then from there, we would renotice that and we have to do another 22 day published notice. With that final draft that the board wants to adopt, right? And then we hold another hearing, right? With that final draft that the board wants to adopt, right? And then we hold another hearing, right? You. The other option, rather than they continue this meeting, we could do a workshop, right? Yeah, we could essentially. If you deny the file outright, it's dead and you have to wait for the planning commission to recommend another file to you with any update. So you can deny it with a handful of suggested changes to it. You could remand it back to them. I think. My recommendation would be if you guys have a draft as to how you want it to look, is to set up a workshop, come up with. The language of what you see is the right way to do it. The language you want included, that's your final draft. Then we set up another hearing after the fact.
So we need an option that allows the public to participate in that workshop so that they help with that draft because so what? What option exists that is included?
Sure. So we could do a workshop that includes public comment.
Not public comment. I mean, public where, so because one of the things that public has stated is. Not just saying this is my issue, but being part of. The build of it.
Sure. So the way the planning commission has been doing these updates is they come up with their draft and like a. Call it a closed public, not to open the public comment workshop. They come up with how they want it to look. They publish that draft online, then they do a follow-up workshop, no time limits. Where the public can submit comments prior to they, it's open for public comment. There's discussion back and forth. So that's all done with the planning commission. Then from there, they come up with their final draft and then do a public hearing, again, open to public comment. That, that public hearing document is what you now have in front of you. It's gone through. A planning commission workshop where they come up with their draft and open the public comment scenario. A public hearing with the planning commission and now it's before you, right? So and I've explained that same process several times. Our, we have a landing page on our, our website that explains all of the different components, where we're at, all the different drafts. Yeah.
It's possible Jay dressed to do a continuation without a date and time certain, or we could do the workshop to develop the language. And look at where the commission hadn't potentially removed a picture that doesn't exist anymore. With ours and then also have a workshop that would take into account. Public input. And we do A, B, and then bring it back to like hearing.
Correct. It would just happen at the planning commission level, right?
What is that? What is that going to do within timelines? Which one is more efficient?
Well. So talk best case scenario and you remanded back to planning. They work on it. They come up with a different draft. They present it to you and if you still don't like it, I mean, it's just this back and forth game, right? And you're the official or you're the, the decision body on this document. So if you have an idea of what you want it to look like and you're willing to work on it. And you have the time to, then I'd say take the time to work on it and come up with what you want to approve, right?
Yeah, I'll take that option because then we can go to the community and ask the community for their input and then. Come back to the. Department because that is, it's not, it's. Especially when it's not in, when an individual person has an issue or concern, but you're talking about actual boards formed regarding water and conservation that want to give input. I think that that's a bigger meeting than an individual person that's wanting to. Give input on it. And then it would also give time to review what needs to be removed. That's duplicative. In terms of things that don't even exist in our county. And then an opportunity for us to go to fishing game and go through the letter that they wrote and see how it relates. And also the time for the different groups to also take that fishing game letter. And go through and see how it relates to, because these two ladies are representing two different groups. That have their own meetings and their own issues and concerns. And I, in my opinion. Not just a comment of what you'd like to see, because sometimes what happens is we just say, public comment received. Five people said no, six people said yes, and that's it. And that is what the community wants. Some of the way from, they want to feel like they're being represented on the issue in the document, not just the. We said they could say something and we crossed that bridge. Well, I would like to, I can do the workshop. I know that it. For a board to do it, then everybody has to be present, but an individual commissioner can do a workshop for the group.
So.
I checked on this one. If a, if a commissioner, if you have more than one person, it becomes an issue. But a commissioner can, because I've been reached out on different issues in the community. I want to make sure I wasn't breaking a rule of having discussions with. Community members on their issues and concerns. So this is, would just be a workshop. Because you're, because the end goal is that I participate in building the document amongst you, right? So in order for me to build the document, I would need to represent the people and without hearing their position, how do I represent the people? Because these two are coming as an example, and there are probably others in the community who not feel represented.
Okay.
I mean, there's that work.
My suggestion is you do a workshop with the full commission. That's going to be the one approving the document, right? Why come up with a draft?
Working with a group of people on something they're going to have.
Right. So I'd say formulate the final draft as a board. As to what you all agree.
With, are you including the community and being heard that?
You can.
We could work on it ourselves, I believe is what I'm hearing. And then we could have. Is that that? Get some feedback and then we would come back to either approve or deny.
So as far as like time limits, I want not doing meetings and how public comment is received, that's all your discretion. Right? So if you want to hold a continuation hearing from this, allowing for unlimited amount of public comment and, and feedback and back and forth, that's up to this board to figure out.
I think that's the extreme of what I'm seeing. I'm trying to make it inclusive of what the Lakes Commission, for example, is bringing.
Okay.
I'm not asking for unlimited public comment. I'm asking to address the fishing game letter. And the information that has come to the board at this time. It's not the same as unlimited.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion unless we have more deliberation. But I, I mean, I can talk about it. And my idea is I believe what. Mr. Good Bell is referencing, which was there would be a continuation. We work on the language ourselves. We provide access to the community to, to give us input. And then we come back to this hearing process so we can approve or deny. Because I don't want to personally, only for myself. I'm not prepared to just deny this. But I think that we could work together, make some improvements, bring it to the public and the public, they're going to know from this hearing. Please give us input, which we will consider as we're drafting it. We come back to the public and we see where we're at and we can, in public again. Or so if you and or deny.
Right.
I'm, I'm proposing a continuation without date and time cert.
So if you, I would do a date and time certain and that being a continuation of this hearing in which you work on it. As a group, we redline the document, right? There's nothing that says you can't workshop. Create your final draft from there. It would get published again, right? And then you have to do another hearing after that and not follow stateseture.
I would, I would really like to follow stateseture.
It's always better.
Well, so this is day three for me.
So. Between now and the continuation, or now and the next time we meet to discuss this specific topic. We can receive additional public comment or we can receive additional agency comments. I mean, we'll follow your discretion as to, if you want us to go and try to elicit specific comment from specific. People on, or agencies on this list, we can make some phone calls or send emails direct right to them.
Yes, about what a realistic timeline is so that there's meaningful public comment, but not into perpetuity because. Twenty-two years I will be collecting social security if it still exists. And I think that's a bit long. So it's thirty days, a reasonable time, because I would also like to speak to the. The commissioner, the planning commissioners and understand some of their deliberations.
YouTube as well, if you have the time to watch them. All those meetings have been recorded and on our channel, so.
So just because I'm a curious kind of guy. Mr. Lentz, which one of y'all are on the comprehensive plan thing?
Well, I'm on this already. I was on this subcomp.
Okay. Where were these entities when y'all were discussing all this?
I don't, never seen.
But it was all public.
It was all published, just like the planning.
And a comment was made today. We get, we get no response from the agencies. Like fire departments and stuff didn't respond. We have no means of making. You respond. There's no way for us to do that. If we send a, a notice that we're doing something in your neighborhood, we can't make you respond. So if they don't respond. How is that our fault? You see what I'm saying? A lot of agencies, they get notified, not in their wheelhouse, nothing they're concerned about, so they don't respond. We can't make them write something out and send it in. We have no way of doing that. And so. And I can't tell you how many of these I've sat in on and the people that come and comment. Never bothered. To go and get involved in any of that. Back when it was in the design process. Which. I see where. We could redefine it a little more in depth than what we've got. But it's like, how complicated do we want this? Simple is good, but you want to cover everything. But. We got to live in the real life and use our brains. If we, if we have an interest in something, then when it's published, we should get involved. Not wait till the last minute to do that. That's my stand.
I've heard from this board, two things at the same time. One is nobody responds, but when they do respond, then when we, we ignore the response when we don't like the response.
No, we're not ignoring it because that's.
I can appreciate having been on the side of planning and zoning hearings and watching what's happening is. Even if everything you say is, holy crap, this is last minute effort, we still have an obligation. We have a representation responsibility. And if there are reasonable issues and concerns raised. If we don't address it, we are just setting ourselves up in the planning department for more hearings regarding issues and concerns that people didn't like. And so why not, since as everybody has agreed, it's been slow as all get out to update this. Why not wait a little bit of time, get the public input? These ladies are here. They've been noticed. And draft it up and submit it because it might be more work now, but it can solve some of the problems that the commission and. The planning development group have to deal with if we hear what the public has to say. And include it as much as we can because the comp plan belongs to the people.
So are we in agreement that we want to revisit this and come up with a better, a different draft with a little more?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I would be, love to hear. I'll take the motion at this.
But before I do, I'd like thirty days timeline. Thirty days, that's what I, my motion will be for a continuance, but I'm looking for thirty days and I also want to look to staff. Thirty days, realistic. I don't want to go personally, I think thirty days gives us time to address this, but I don't know what's on your plate and it's very easy for me to put more stuff on your plate. And on my, what is it?
I should ask what expectation you have to staff. So we didn't draft this document, right? We, we facilitated the, the meetings and we were there and we helped the commission in a sense of. Like all the noticing and whatnot, but this is a, the planning commission's document, right?
But ultimately staff, here's my expectation personally, is that you're going to assist us in not writing something that's going to get us sued.
Okay.
I mean, there's a very baseline effort. And to make it professional, so that I'm not asking to move Lake Ponderay into Hudu Valley, because that's not really realistic. So. I don't know, the, this is day three.
Sure. Well, I should say between now and this.
I don't expect staff to rewrite it.
Okay.
I would hope for some assistance from staff. And as we are drafting our writing. For expediency to consider before we come back to hearing.
So.
Thirty day timeline, if I'm making a motion for date and time certain. Are we establishing if I say thirty days from today's date? So now we're looking.
Yeah.
I think that's a reasonable timeframe because I think the majority of us are gone for a week. Convention coming up, so I think we should find a reasonable time to make sure, because it's not just our schedule, it's community. And I can appreciate that the care and concern for staff, but we need to make sure, because these are agencies that are coming. And we are also bound to be in the. Maybe. I'm think.
I'd be looking to your admin as to your guys' schedule and when it, when it would fit. I think we have a. I think we have a hearing right now with you guys on February eighth and twenty-second. If I remember right, I would suggest adding it to either one of those dates. My expectation would be that you review this document, you come with your prepared changes that you want. Of course, don't discuss it with each other outside of open session. So we come to that meeting with your prepared, hey, this is what I like to see and it's. Formulating what the final draft looks like. So it's kind of like a workshop in a sense where you guys are working on the document together. In an open session like this, coming up with your draft and what, after which we would publish again. We would revisit this and sometime and. Then in March for adoption.
I'm just curious because every person who spoke on opposition mentioned considering a consultant. Would that be included in what you're talking about right now?
That has nothing to do with this today. So for myself, no.
We don't have a budget right now, nor do we budget for this year for a consultant. That's why we haven't. But the previous, the previous board and the planning commission, they've talked about it. That is, you know, if we had the money, we'd love to have a consultant, but we don't. So we're going to deal with it. We got.
February twenty-second works.
I think we have another component that same day, so that works. And you'll see community design, I think, is scheduled for that day.
What is, for example, Lakes Commission, when's your next meeting?
I, I am curious how this, this process for these two chapters. The, you know, the rest of the comp plan.
In the words of Chairman Bradshaw, new board, new day, I think is what it was. So, but at the same time, my intention is to honor the work that our commission has done.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this one item. It's going to include a little more detail. And it'll have nothing to do with the other things they're working on. And that was part of the deal of redoing it because some of it was conflicting. That's the reason it needed to be rebuilt. And so. That's how we got to where we're at on this item. Was to clean it up. Simplify it, make it easy to understand. Through y'all's comment, it could mention some other things. And for more detail on this, you could go to this chapter. It's all about wetlands. This chapter, that's all about FEMA. It gives you a place to, you don't have to, okay, where would they put it? It's not under here. Where do I go? It would say for wetlands. We say what we want to include in that, but for additional information, see chapter, paragraphs, so and so. And then you know exactly where to turn or look up and. Even though it may be in detail, it'll be simple.
And I need to clarify, I was so I can do workshops for community issues. I need to actually double check if you could do one for one that actually came before us. I want to double check that because I, it was a community. I think they said, I want to double check that to make sure I do that.
So these, all of these changes to the comprehensive plan components. The planning commission has like a motto, if you will, where how does this lead to land use regulation? So as you're drafting this. You can add all the, call it fluff, if you will, but if it doesn't lead to some kind of land use regulation, it's somewhat pointless to be in there, right? This is a land use document that leads to land use regulation. So just kind of as a little two cents worth, as you're drafting this, kind of keep that in mind.
Thank you.
So would it be simpler? Just to send it back to y'all because y'all address all those as you look at it.
But it still would be simpler to do. Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
To, to send it back to planning?
Planning, yeah.
I don't know because like.
Yeah, it's going to be our decision.
Maybe a lot of back and forth. They have to, have to schedule and get that published for their meeting, have another hearing down there. You're going to have to do the same thing here. Longer to send that back. I know they've, they've been very busy.
Let's do it on. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I move for a continuation of the Bonner County comprehends components update hazardous area. And special areas for site until. February twenty second, twenty twenty three, would address concerns and provide additional opportunities. For agencies to comment. At one thirty in the VOCC third floor room.
Can I add agencies and public comment?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
And public comment.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need roll call? Let's have a roll call though.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is two forty one and twenty seven seconds and.